Good morning. We're here for our weekly board session. It's Wednesday, February 27th at nine o'clock in the morning in the Senator hearing room. And if you will join us, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Flag protocol person, shouldn't the eagle be facing out? But are they trying to put it by the camera? This is a laundry that probably will wreck my day.
You know, I'm not sure. Yeah, I think it should be. We have public safety officials here today. They probably understand all that.
Would you get us the answer, please?
And, you know, it's great to be here this morning. We've got, what, a couple inches of snow?
Yeah, we came in slow and late. We made it on time.
Yeah, we're all here and it's amazing that I had, I was supposed to be at the Capitol to testify this morning. That got canceled. Travel Salem boards got canceled. The Oregon State Fair Council got canceled. And I'm sitting there, we're all here. What's wrong with these people? They can't drive in two inches of snow? All right. Here we go. We have, nobody signed up for public comment this morning. And so we'll go right into consent calendar. And I believe it's Mr. Willis's turn.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt a consent calendar. Under Business Services, approve a recommendation to uphold pay grades for five classifications. Number fifteen, paralegal. Number eighty-five, budget analyst senior. Number eighty-six, budget analyst one. Number eighty-seven, budget analyst two. Number four thirty-eight, fleet specialist. Under Public Works, approve amendment number five to the purchase order with Les Schwab Tire Center, adding $75,000 for a total of $175,000 for tires and alignment services to Marion County fleet vehicles. Approve an order to schedule a public hearing for mass gathering nineteen dash zero zero one, real promotions for March 27th, 2019. And approve an order receiving the road official's report and schedule a public hearing for March 27th, 2019, to vacate the north end of Phipps Lane northeast.
I'll second it.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Hope some of those tires for $175,000 are studlet. No tires, yeah. No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Our first item under action is to consider approving and adoption of administrative ordinance granting zone change case, ZC case eighteen dash zero zero five, J Konzer and Sons LLC. Joe Fenimore, good morning, Joe. It's good to have you here with us this morning.
Morning Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. Deciding before you today is an application to change the zone from urban development to multiple family residential on 4.56 acres located on Ward Drive northeast in Salem. The applicant proposes to changing the zone to allow development of the property for apartments. The property is located on the southwest corner of Ward Drive and Fisher Road intersection. Property to the east across Fisher Road is vacant and inside the Salem city limits and is to be developed as a park in the future. Other lands to the east are zoned UD. Properties to the west and south are zoned RM and developed with condominiums. Property across Ward Drive to the north contains a church on RM's own land as well as a single-family subdivision zoned RS. The hearings officer conducted a public hearing on the matter on November 28th, 2018, and on January 23rd issued an initial decision granting the request subject to conditions. The conditions outlined in Exhibit B are listed on the second to the last page of your packet and required the developer to obtain building permits, meet development standards of the Marion County Code, dedicate right-of-way and construct frontage improvements. The applicant's representative has confirmed to staff that there are no objections to those conditions. The board received the hearings officer's initial decision and held the application for the mandatory appeal period. No appeals were filed. Notice of adoption of the ordinance was made on February 20th and is now before you for final consideration and adoption. Options for the board include adopt the ordinance as written, direct staff to repair and modify ordinance for consideration, choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. Staff recommends the board adopt the ordinance as written. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Joe.
Joe, can you, I apologize for having you repeat this, but could you tell me, I was looking at it on Google Maps, what are the other buildings surrounding this property again? You said it at the beginning.
So to the, I think, if I remember right, to the west toward Portland Road is condominium, is some condominiums. To the north across Ward Drive is a property that's a little residential subdivision and a church, a multifamily zone.
Yep, I see that.
To the east is a vacant parcel that's going to be a future city park. There's also some UD zone property there too, I believe. And then to the south, I think, is undeveloped at this time.
And you said to the west across, I can't see the street name there, but it looks like on the Stillwater Drive, there's some buildings there.
It's on Stillwater?
It looks like it, yeah. It looks like Stillwater tees into Ward.
Yeah, those are condominiums there.
Those are condominiums. Oh, great. Okay, super. And then could you tell me a little bit about what the zoning is now?
The zoning right now is urban development.
And what is that?
What that means, it's an area that's in the sewer and water district that is not annexed to the city yet, and it's large and available for development. So the two ways you can do it is do a zone change and develop it in the county or annex it to the city and develop it under the city code.
Okay, great.
Joe, this isn't pertinent to the decision. I'm just curious, like, how many possible living spaces that could almost match up with what's there already? But what's a total capacity of a property?
You know, I don't remember the exact number on this one that they're proposing. Part of this, if you look to the south, there's a creek that goes through there. And they want to maintain that as an area that for the people who are living there can access that and be in that area. So they're not going to be, develop it as quite as much as it possibly could be.
They're just matching up from what's just almost the same sized piece next door. You can see up to maybe thirty units, so that's all good. I'm making that up, but that's what a quick glance looks like to me.
But we need the density, that's for sure.
They didn't really give a number.
It's all right.
So this is, this is pretty much dialed in. Let's go. I don't have any caution questions.
Chair Cameron, then if I could, I would make a motion that we do adopt the administrative ordinance grant zone change to case eighteen oh oh five, J Konzer and Sons LLC and accept the recommendation as provided.
I second the motion.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Thank you. And you're probably back for our public hearing here at nine thirty. I better slow this down because we're going to be sitting here in recess.
Now, some of you had coffee delivered. I could use the time.
Well, there's a story behind that. You know, that's the first time he's ever brought me coffee, though. I do have to say thank you, John, for bringing my coffee down. There's a story behind that. I was going to make coffee, but I would have been late. And he said, I'll bring, I'll make it and bring it to you. So I'm going to just remember to follow him into the coffee room.
Let's just leave it at that.
Follow John into the coffee room, just be, before I'm supposed to be down here, and he'll make me coffee. All right. Under the Sheriff's Office, consider approval of amendment number two to the contract for services with Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency to add $40,743 for a revised contract. Total of $392,439 for services to support the Marion County Sheriff's Office, the excellent office of the Marion County Sheriff's Office. And here today are Sheriff Myers and Commander Wood. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, for the record, my name is Jason Myers, Marion County Sheriff. We're here today to talk about an addendum that we'd like to do with a contract with the Community Action Agency, which we've contracted with for a number of years to provide services at our transition center through the Dimunis Resource Center. I'm going to have Commander Wood talk a little more in specifics about what they do and what we're asking for.
Good morning Commissioners, and thank you for a moment of your time. Again, my name is Jeff Wood. I'm a Division Commander with the Marion County Sheriff's Office, and we are here to ask for the additional $40,743 to be added to our existing contract with Community Action Agency of the Mid Willamette Valley and the Dimunis Resource Center. Just to kind of give you some historical perspective, the Dimunis Resource Center, named after former Chief Justice Paul Dimunis, is designed to be a one-stop center located at our Marion County Transition Center. The Dimunis Resource Center staff, which consists of a manager, two navigators, and employment specialists, provide a variety of what we call evidence-based practices. And over the last year have served an unduplicated number of over 1,800 individuals who are looking to exit our criminal justice system. Whether they are coming there due to a past conviction, whether they are part of a pre-trial diversion program offered by the District Attorney's Office, whether they're incarcerated at our transition center, or on probation or post-prison supervision, the Dimunis Resource Center provides an array of services, as exemplified by employment supports, housing referrals, basic needs, financial literacy. They provide an array of cognitive behavior classes designed to facilitate change in the individual so they do not engage in future criminal activity. They provide parenting classes and have open enrollment with the Oregon Health Plan so that people can get a sign up for healthcare. The program staff also are embedded in a number of our programs that we have at the Transition Center. For example, many of you have heard of our Women's Accelerated Reentry Program, which turned into our Strategic Accelerated Reentry and Transition Program. Those are people who are coming from a Department of Corrections institution to our Transition Center, who are returning to Marion County from incarceration. And they provide those classes that I just described earlier, in addition to all the 144 beds and inmates at our Transition Center. And I will say that unlike a lot of releasing facilities throughout the state of Oregon, 100%, 100%, every single soul at that Transition Center gets out. They return to our community, they return to our community, interact with our family, our friends, and we want them to be successful and provide those services that are designed to facilitate positive change. The location of the Transition Center has been wonderful with some of the expansion that we've been able to do. We actually have a new area for the Dimunis staff to actually spread out. We have them very cramped in one multipurpose room at the center. We are looking to expand their footprint, so to speak, so they can expand some of those services and have a little more breathing room, so to speak. Of the $40,743 that we are looking to add to their contract, $30,743 is actually coming through a transfer from the Community Services Department via the Client Support Fund. If you recall, back in October 25th, we had our Marion County Reentry Breakfast, co-hosted by Commissioner Cameron and then Commissioner Dan at Carlson, where we raised money for clients to provide some of these supportive services and designated some of that money to go to the Dimunis Resource Center. The Marion County Justice Reinvestment Council, which provides some governance over the Client Support Fund, approved this move back in December 13th, 2018. And I will say, it has also been incorporated within the supplemental budget of the county. And then finally, an additional $10,000 is coming from what we call the 180 Fund, the Community Corrections Fund, to add to this so that we can get Dimunis to the finish line, so to speak, within this current fiscal year. I will add, this contract does end on June 30th, 2019. We are entering a whole new legislative year, a new biennium. And so this really is designed to get Dimunis to that endpoint. And again, we'll, we'll see what the funding levels will be come July 1st of 2019. With that, I thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Jeff. I just didn't know, you just brought it up. This was a two-year contract that started, because we just had the amendment, but it started in July 1st, 2017.
Correct.
So this is the end of the contract in the last few months. Questions for Commander?
I should just take the time to figure it out, but I'm reading here about it, why it's here. It doesn't exceed 100,000, however, it does exceed 25% of the original contract. I look back and I see a contract total of 351, so that's not, but there was another amendment. So what else did we add on, Jeff? And maybe you said I didn't catch it.
No, Commissioner, I don't believe I did. You know, initially, when we started the first contract, 27th, July 1st, 2017 to 2019, similar to where we are right now, we didn't know exactly what the funding level would be from the legislature. So we did an initial budget amount that I believe we had either through grants or through the Community Corrections Fund. Once we determined what the justice reinvestment funding level was going to be for Dimunis Resource Center, I believe we added roughly $200,000 to that. And then hence the Second Amendment, that is before you right now, which is the additional $40,743.
Just do the numbers. What was the original idea it might cost? I don't care about funding source. And then it ends up at three, four, it was 100?
Around, it was, the original was 125 or something like that.
So we do grow a whole bunch. But it's all right. I just want to know that it happened and...
It did, yes.
And some of the reasons. Okay.
And so $30,000 came from that breakfast and through Community Services Department? And where did the other 10 come from?
Commissioner Willis, the additional 10,000 came from the contingency of the 180 Fund, the Community Corrections Fund. So that's coming from home probation, community corrections.
Which is a state fund. It's the baseline funding for community corrections, and the state authorized to the county to perform that function.
Okay. I think this is an important program that we do here.
Which is, since we have a little bit of time, maybe a time for to educate a little bit about what's going on in the building and where that funding level is right now. So Commissioners both understand that we're over there battling to try to get it up to where it needs to be. And the importance, and Sheriff, you and I talked about this breakfast yesterday, and the importance of us, if we do anything, doing this breakfast, if we expand it or whatever, that we make sure that we get our funding out of it and trying to be creative with raising that 20 to 30,000 dollars every year.
Yeah, so Jeff can give you the exact dollar amount and the Governor's recommended budget, but it's less than what we're receiving this biennium, which is troubling because of all the programs that we have and the offender population that we're keeping at a local level versus sending, what we've done previously, sending to prison. So we're working tirelessly to get that funding level up. There was a cost study done in 2018 for the actual costs that counties bear to provide this service. And there's about a $55 million difference between the Governor's recommended budget and what that cost study says the actual costs are to perform this role in the community. And that's what we're striving for, is the cost study amount.
Maybe to give an exact number, the currently, two years entire statewide budget for community corrections baseline funding is $273 million. The current Governor's recommended budget is at $259 million. Obviously, that's significantly less than we're at right now, and the Sheriff said it very, very well. We do believe, we're statutorily required to do what's called an actual cost time study. Those numbers have come out, and it's of no surprise. Good programs cost money, supervision costs money. And the daily rate, it all kind of whittles down to what is that daily rate per client, per day, over two-year period? And it's gone up from roughly $12 to $14 and a half dollars per person per day. That's what we believe the actual costs incurred by the counties are and what the Sheriff is very rigorously trying to support.
I think, you know, the whole justice reinvestment that we've been doing, well, I was there in 2013, we passed that bill. And what's happened, there's, I mean, you go over to the building now, and how many people are there left that were there then? And we've done a great job through the state, especially Marion County, of avoiding sending people to state prison, right? To save money at that. But people are not remembering and investing in the things to reduce recidivism and all those, those types of things. But we've done a great job here in Marion County, led by Commissioner Carlson since 2007 and the Sheriff's Department. And so we have to go over there and continually educate and have people understand that you've got to, you've got to fund these programs, or you're going to fill the prison bed.
And get a lot more expensive.
Yeah.
Well, and my concern is for the safety of our communities. You know, I know the state doesn't want more prison beds, and they don't want to put people in prison. But at the end of the day, if we have people who are convicted of serious crimes, we have to have a system to make sure that our community is safe. And so it seems like we have a great system here. It seems like we've adapted to what the state wants. We've been able to keep our community safe without putting more people in prison. I would hate to see the state cut that, and then all of a sudden, we're left in a situation where our communities are at risk. That just really concerns me.
Well, I know the DA plays a big role in this whole process and, you know, our community. But the options are that, is if we can't, if we can't fund these programs, then guess where they're going to go? And then the state is going to have this burden of building and opening new prisons. So it's not the direction, I don't, I don't think it's, it's a public safety, it's a safety in the community, but it's also human lives here that we're talking about and, you know, Commander's people and what they do, as you've got to witness some of that, of changing people's lives and reuniting them back with their families and their children and becoming productive citizens. So it's important stuff, really important, that we get the funding for it. And $14 a day? What's the cost to put somebody in DOC? 90?
114.
Yeah, right. So...
You know, this is just more of a comment, but with all the revenue measures they're talking about over there, it just doesn't make sense that then with new money that's coming in anyway, that you would cut services. That doesn't make sense, or hopefully it can get better.
So when you get to talk to any of your representatives, it's important.
So Chair Cameron, if I could, I'd make a motion that we do approve amendment number two to the contract for services with Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency to add $40,743 for a revised contract with a total then of $392,439 for support the Marion County Sheriff's Office.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right.
Sorry, I took Combs' motion, but he can have the rest.
You can have as many of them as you want.
It was a motion and a second. That's all that matters, right? Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your service. Well, we will recess for about, well, let's look at the official clock.
Say 10.
Eight minutes. We're going to, we're going to come back for a public hearing at nine thirty. Okay, we're here. We're going to open a public hearing back from recess. Public hearing. And this public hearing is to consider appeal of the hearings officer's decision denying petition P, case eighteen dash eleven, O'Brien. And Joe is going to kick us off with that.
Once again, good morning Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you is a request to divide a 9.7 acre parcel in a special agriculture zone into three parcels under a Measure 49 approval on property located on O'Brien Avenue south in Salem. The property is located on the west side of O'Brien Avenue, approximately 300 feet north of its intersection with Jory Hill Road. The property contains an existing dwelling, accessory buildings, well and septic system. The property was a subject to the Measure 49 claim and was approved for the creation of two additional lots and two additional dwellings. The property is also located within the extensive groundwater overlay zone. Surrounding properties to the north and east are zoned SA and consist of various sized farming operations. Properties to the south and west are in the acreage residential zone and rural residential development. In May 2018, the planning director issued a decision approving the request, subject to conditions. The applicant appealed that decision to the hearings officer, who conducted a public hearing on June 21st, and on August 29th issued a decision denying the request. September 13th, the hearings officer's decision was appealed to the board. The appeal, the planning director's decision to the hearings officer was based on two conditions of approval related to road improvements that the applicant objected to. In the denial, the hearings officer explained in finding eight point two on page seven that the health and safety provisions are not exempt from Measure 49 waivers. Then in finding 13 on page 14, the hearings officer discusses the contested conditions and states that the O'Brien Avenue safety standards are not currently met, but they also are not waived under the Measure 49 order. The hearings officer concludes that based on the evidence and the record, she cannot make sufficient findings to justify the challenged conditions, but also cannot approve the application if the public safety standards cannot be met. In the appeal, the applicant argues that the hearings officer's conclusion, the public safety requirements are not met as unfounded and that the decision should be reversed, that the hearings officer made engineering and design findings without the benefit of a detailed design analysis and relied on inaccurate information on what was required of the previous developments having the same impacts on the streets. Applicant argues that in the previous partition across the street in 2004, site distance and road improvements were not required, and there are no new or changed circumstances toward the conditions in this case, and that the impacts of those two additional dwellings, of the proposed dwellings do not support extraction of the conditions. In the appeal, they indicated they were willing to widen paving on O'Brien from Jory Hill to the point of access to properties, as long as right-of-way exists, and they will widen the gravel portion of the west side of O'Brien Avenue along their property line. After the board accepted the appeal, the applicant hired an engineer and have submitted an engineering report that identifies mitigation measures that can be accomplished to improve safety on O'Brien Avenue and at its intersection with Jory Hill Road. The applicant met with Public Works staff to discuss the proposed mitigation measures, and based on that being, Public Works Engineering has revised its conditions, and those were added to your packet recently. The board has the options of continuing the public hearing, close the hearing and leave the record open, close the hearing and approve, modify, or deny the request, or remand the matter back to the hearings officer. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any question?
Not yet.
Any questions for Joe at this time? No? Okay. Thanks, Joe. We may have some more when we come back. So we are now going to have people that have signed up for the public hearing. First person on our list, and then, Mark, did you want to come up with your clients? Is that...
Well, my client just signed in for those services.
Okay, great. So Mark Hoyt, if you want to come up over here, and then if you want them to come up with you or whatever, it's up to you.
If you'd like them to come up, I can have the applicant stand, and we can identify them, and we can sandwich the towers this morning and walk out.
They don't need to come up, yeah. We like, we like to see your smiling face, yeah.
I know, that's not true.
Welcome.
Good to be here. Commissioners, thank you for hearing this appeal. Wanted to touch base with you quickly. This is an appeal of a decision that I think surprised everybody. The application was originally filed and approved by the planning director with conditions that were, as Public Works likes to do, and I think appropriately tries to do, to protect safety measures, saying, hey, we've got to be satisfied that you're going to do something in a safe condition. Those conditions made the applicant, as applicants are wont to be, a little bit nervous because they weren't as clear as to exactly what would be required. And if they aren't addressed in the initial decision process and they can't reach an agreement later on down the road, things can get challenging. And so there was an appeal filed, kind of as a protective measure, to try and get some clarity as to exactly what would be required and what would be done, because some of the Public Works comments indicated or provided that they might require things that could be potentially prohibitively expensive or disproportionate to any impact that would be put forth. So the appeal came in, everybody's walking through the process, Public Works is presenting their information, the applicant is talking about why they would believe that the thing should be narrowed. Late in the hearing, the hearings officer discloses that she lives nearby but outside the hearings, outside the notice area, and then surprising everyone, including Public Works, issues a decision flat-out denying the application, concluding conditions can't be met. Not simply imposing the conditions and leaving that choice to the applicant, but denying the application in total. So we appealed, and as part of that process, we retained Bill Peterson of AKS Engineering. Bill did some extensive analysis of the intersection. I think that's set forth in the documents. I'll touch base on some quick highlights. That information, I think, is in your packet and has been provided to you. There are currently six homes on O'Brien. There is a seventh home under construction. The property directly across the street from this one was divided in 2004. As part of that division, no improvements were required to the intersection at issue here. After that division was completed, one of those parcels was sold, and a new home is under construction, and building permits were issued for that home with no improvements required of the intersection at issue here. All of these things made this, the flat-out denial of this application difficult for the applicants to fathom. There are two commercial enterprises currently functioning there. There is an event center that holds events up to 250 people, serving alcohol for wedding receptions and related events. There is a Christmas tree farm at the end of the road that has beer tastings, growler fills, and sells Christmas trees during the Christmas season. All of these things generate a substantial amount of traffic through the Jory Hill and O'Brien intersection. But if you review crash data for the state of Oregon, there's not been an accident there in the last 10 years. So there have been in excess of 350,000 estimated traffic movements through that intersection without an accident. So it would certainly appear that from a practical perspective that the intersection is safe and functioning appropriately. Everyone, I think, that has driven on that road would acknowledge that site distances to the east is when exits of O'Brien are not ideal. We live in Marion County, and if we don't allow development in any area that will be, that will impact or put traffic through a intersection that doesn't meet vertical or horizontal curve distances, we can't build anything in rural Marion County. We believe inappropriate analysis is our appropriate... in rural Marion County. We believe inappropriate analysis is our appropriate steps possible to establish safety and allow the development to go forward. Mr. Peterson's report identifies shaving the bank back along the northern edge, the applicants are fine with that, identifies placing a sign that says limited site distance in the right-of-way at the applicant's expense that would allow that, identify that location as one that, one should be cautious as one approaches. The applicant is fine with those conditions. As Joe noted, we had a very productive meeting with Public Works. After that meeting, we provided proposed conditions to them, they made some revisions to those, we are fine with those revisions. Joe has provided us proposed conditions that we are fine with as well. So all parties involved, in terms of Public Works and Marion County Planning Staff and the applicant, have agreed upon conditions that we believe will appropriately address the conditions that do exist there. As part of that, the applicants will be widening O'Brien to allow a twenty-foot-wide all-weather surface from the northern edge of Jory Hill to the northern edge of this property. One of the applications I didn't mention is that there's a commercial bus operation that operates out of there that was allowed to continue to operate, or to start operating and continue, without making any improvements to the intersection at issue here. So from the applicant's perspective, certainly, there is a perception that they are being asked to fix a problem that no one else was asked to address in any way. We believe that we have found a way of addressing that problem that will significantly improve those conditions, improvements that will not be made if this application is not approved, and significantly improve the safety for everyone entering this intersection. I don't think there's any disputes regarding the Measure Forty-Nine qualifications of the property or the approval. The applicant is aware that their clock is ticking on the ten-year requirement because they purchased the property from the original Measure Forty-Nine applicant. That would be one of the conditions that would be involved in the approval, if the board should see to approve it. We're happy to address any questions you have. We can go into detail a little more on the engineering if you would like, but from our perspective, this is an intersection that has had significantly more traffic authorized to pass through it, without any requirements being imposed on those people providing that additional traffic. Although the applicant would certainly prefer to be treated as all their neighbors have been, they certainly recognize that safety improvements will be of a benefit to everyone, and are willing to make those improvements as we've agreed and discussed with Public Works. That's our pitch.
Questions for Mark? None? Okay. I guess it's for Joe, the question I have. My, the, the one thing that's, maybe, Mark, you can, you've already highlighted this, but in staff's report says, although the appeal is based on the conditions, the hearing officer considered the entire application. I think you covered that. Why would the hearings officer go through the whole application versus the, just the conditions?
I don't think anybody knows.
Okay.
Why that happened. Only two conditions were being challenged, and the hearings officer reversed the decision.
And then, and then in your testimony, you talked about those two conditions, and you've gone back since then and met with Public Works, and have come up with what those conditions are. Your clients have agreed to those conditions.
Yes.
And Public Works has agreed to those new conditions.
Correct. We exchanged those conditions late last week and earlier this week, and all parties have agreed on the conditions as would be imposed.
And that's what I'm looking for, is what those new conditions are. Joe, when you come back up, maybe you can highlight what those conditions are. Okay?
Just from, and those conditions came from our engineers' reports, so I'll kind of introduce them for Joe.
Perfect.
As one leaves O'Brien looking to the east.
So, O'Brien, excuse me, and I'm trying to get a visual here. O'Brien is to the north of Jory Hill, correct?
O'Brien is a T-intersection into Jory Hill.
Right.
With no, it's not an X, it's a T.
Right.
Goes north. As one exits O'Brien, heading south onto Jory Hill, looking east, there is a bank on the north side of the road.
Okay.
And the road falls away at a distance of about two hundred feet or so. It begins to, goes down fairly steeply. And the issue is not horizontal curves, it's the vertical curves. The road goes down. What Bill Peterson was able to identify was that if you shave back within the right-of-way, the embankment, site distance will be increased roughly sixteen percent or so, taking it from less than fifty percent of the desired site distance to in excess of fifty percent. So there'd be significant site distance improvements to the east through those improvements, and then in that same area, the sign would be posted restricted site distance ahead. So as one approaches on Jory Hill from the east, one would know that that intersection was coming up and be made aware of it.
Okay. There's a photo in the file that says restricted site distance, but that's an example, that's not the actual area.
Correct. That is an example of the kind of sign that could be posted there that we are proposing as a condition.
Okay.
And then there's some conditions that relate to O'Brien. And one of the things I do wanna highlight is, we believe that the incorrect analysis was done here. The road that provides access to the applicant's property is O'Brien. There are no conditions on O'Brien that will impact or limit site distance. Site distance can be achieved without any problem at the point of intersection with O'Brien. This is an intersection that one will have to travel through once one has already accessed the county road system. And if we are going to begin requiring improvements to off-site intersections that don't meet horizontal and vertical curves in rural Marion County, we are opening Pandora's box.
Can you clarify?
Commissioner, go ahead.
Can you clarify that? So this site improvement, is, it's not on the corner of O'Brien and Jory Hill?
So the, there is, there are two properties, if we have O'Brien and Jory Hill.
Yeah.
These two properties are owned by others. This property is a second property to the north on O'Brien. It does not, and is not contiguous to Jory Hill. So the driveways will be placed on, from O'Brien onto this property. One will have exited those driveways and be on the road system before encountering Jory Hill. And so that, that's the, the issue that we see in terms of extending that impact. Now, we recognize that Jory Hill is not an ideal intersection, and we're happy to make those improvements because we recognize that that's gonna be a benefit to everyone, including the applicants.
Wait till we have to fix this on High Low Road.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, yeah, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, how do we do that?
Counsel?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair. There was a question about the authority of the hearings officer to review the application in its entirety, and on page six of her opinion, paragraph seven, she does address that. She references Marion County Code seventeen-point-one-seven-two-point-oh-four-oh, and states that while the applicant challenges two conditions, the hearings officer must consider the whole application fresh and is not bound by the planning director's findings, conclusions, or conditions.
Thank you.
And, and we don't challenge that she had the authority to reconsider the entire application. It was just surprising that a decision was made that conditions could not be met when there was no evidence to support that. It wasn't, I'm gonna impose these conditions, and if you don't wanna meet them, it's up to you. It was, you cannot meet these, and I'm taking that option off the table, with no evidence being submitted at all to support that conclusion. That is what was hard to fathom about that decision. From a hearings officer who late in the process disclosed she lived nearby.
Yeah. And so, and this is my final comment, so the, and I think you explained to Commissioner Willis that, that the clear picture, this property will access O'Brien far north of the actual intersection of O'Brien and Jory Hill. So if I'm leaving the tree farm in December with a Christmas tree, that we're asking these applicants to improve something that's gonna biff in all those properties up there, 'cause we're asking them to improve the site distance at O'Brien and Jory Hill, even though this property is not physically next to that. It's, it's the access that they come and go.
That is correct.
Got it.
And the applicant has agreed to create a, right now, there's about a twelve-foot-wide travel lane, so two cars passing is challenging, particularly when there's a bus there. The applicant has agreed to provide a twenty-foot-wide all-weather surface from Jory Hill to their northern boundary. So the Christmas tree farm, the event center, all of those facilities will have the benefit of the widened all-weather travel surface for the distance from applicant's northern boundary to Jory Hill Road. So there's, there's two sets of improvements that are beneficial to everyone, that are all coming from the applicant, at the applicant's sole expense.
Got it. Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. We haven't seen you all day today. Welcome back.
You asked about the conditions. They should've been added to your packet, their Public Works revised conditions.
Yeah, I've got them.
Okay.
But if you could highlight those, is this the MCPW Engineering Revised Conditions?
Correct. And Mr. Hoyt basically outlined that they'll shave the bank at the intersection. They will, if Public Works can, can, if there's utilities in the way, they can get them to lower the utilities, they'll shave more, more, as much as they can based on that. They will also pay for a sign, pay the county sign shop, Public Works to put up the sign. Once the initial sign is paid for, then it's maintained by Public Works from that point on. They will widen O'Brien. They will add, they will add gravel where they can to make it up to twenty feet along the paved section, and they will, they will improve it all the way to where their driveway comes in, whether it's either side or both sides, and then from that point to the rest of the property, they'll make, they'll improve their side of it to twenty feet. So it's a total of twenty feet.
So I'm not the applicant, but how much does a sign cost?
I do not know.
Well, that's a good question.
But when, if, if you do approve this, and you, and you bring, and we, and we come back with the order to adopt the order, I can, I can get that information from the sign shop.
If I could, just to follow, Joe, just tell me, and tell me that Public Works finds this acceptable and an improved situation, et cetera, can you?
Yes, the results of the meeting we had with the applicant, it was, it was determined that this makes, makes it safer for everybody out there, and, and as such, it, it should be approved that, as that, with those conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Anything?
That's what I was looking for as well.
So if, and I'm just gonna make this last statement, Joe. I, I don't see, and, I mean, you just said it, that Public Works, but, but we didn't get a recommendation.
From staff.
Right.
And I, I, that is because until the hearing's done, I don't know what's gonna come up with the hearing.
Okay.
So I can't make the recommendation until, until the hearing is.
All right.
Until I've heard everything at the hearing.
So we'll make that recommendation.
So if you're asking me for a recommendation, I would recommend that you approve it, subject to these conditions as well as the other ones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. 'Cause I think that's what I wanna do.
This is, when I first read it, I, I'm kinda going a different way. I'm thinking, you know, they're trying to say that nobody else had to do this when they did anything, therefore, why do I? And then I'm thinking, well, now you're on another side, and maybe this does affect things. But I'm not hearing that now. And then a former counsel, Joe Stonecypher, gave us big lectures, 'cause I, and maybe I still don't get it, but you should be exposed to the idea of nexus. Is that a word that means anything to you, Jane? But it's, it's the relevance of, of demand or inaction to the subject. And then when you hear about this being further down, the worst would be like, I build a house, and I might drive to Portland, so I gotta improve all the roads to Portland. Well, you know that's not reasonable. And so...
Well, no, 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 we're gonna, we're gonna stop it.
Wilson, we care.
Yeah, Wilson, go. We're not going past that.
Thank you. Thanks for straightening that up.
We made that, we made that statement about Clackamas County.
Anyway, I've, I'm satisfied with all these things.
We're gonna make them pay for the wall, too.
I'm done.
All right. Anything else, Commissioner? So, do you wanna make this motion, or you want him to make this motion?
Well, I make them use all of them, but.
Yeah. So we gotta close the public hearing, and I think if we're in agreement here, we wanna close the public hearing and approve the application.
With conditions.
With the conditions.
With...
That's what I wanted.
Right. The revised conditions, it looks like? Is that right? Okay.
Right. The conditions that are outlined in, in today's presentation.
Presentation. Great. Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing, considering the appeal of the hearings officer's decision denying partition case eighteen dash zero-eleven, O'Brien. And we approve the application, subject to the revised conditions presented today.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Is that good, counsel, the motion?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right. Good.
The order will come back to you to look at before final adoption.
Right, got it. Thanks, Joe. Thank you for being here today. I think that concludes our business for the day. So Commissioner, if you wanna read the weekly counselor, the council, the weekly calendar, and then we can chat, if there's anything else to chat about that.
Okay, today...
Am I seeing you at noon today?
Cancelled.
Okay.
Today is Wednesday, February twenty-seventh, and we are in board session in the Senator Hearing Room. At one forty-five, we have the Open Doors Charitable Trust informational meeting located in Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. Tomorrow, February twenty-eighth, at nine in the morning, we have a work session on I-5 Aurora-Donald Interchange located in Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of this building. On March fourth, that's Monday at eight in the morning, Commissioner Cameron and myself will be back in Washington, DC for the National Association of Counties Legislative Session. On Tuesday, March fifth, we will still be back there for the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference. We'll also be meeting with our federal delegation to talk about our needs here in Marion County. And on Wednesday, March sixth, we will still be back in DC, meeting with our federal, federal delegation to talk about the needs that we have here in Marion County.
So I'm just...
Are you gonna, you gonna run the county while we're going?
There will be some changes.
I bet there will be.
I just was thinking...
Jane, will you keep an eye on him while we're going?
She does, just so you know. I wanna make a comment, watching this TV this morning on the Cohen stuff. It's gonna be buzzing when you get to Washington, isn't it? Huh?
We're gonna be focused on Marion County.
I, you know what, Commissioner, I do not even watch TV. I don't know what you're talking about.
Really?
I, you know what I focus here? It's like, I'm not, that's just all like noise to me.
Well, it's bad noise, isn't it?
I don't know. It's like...
All right.
We have a couple of big projects we're trying to get, get done here, right? And I think, you know, talking about the sewer system up in the canyon, and that's an expensive project, and talking about some of the infrastructure needs we have. I mean, I think that's...
Will you get in some licks on Detroit, I hope?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we've got, we got our federal agenda, that's what we're focused on. You know, we, we had a successful year last year with, you know, we shared that with Congressman Schrader last week. Was that last week when he was here? We shared that with the group, and, you know, we, we wanna make sure that we're getting our Marion County people taken care of through the grants and things that we can bring back. So, and, and then you heard from the sheriff today, or from Commander Wood, we've got, those two lead positions are a result of federal public safety grants that we've got. So those are the types of things we're focused on. I, I don't, I mean...
Well, I'd like you to be current.
Would you keep me up today? Because I read the, I read the local newspaper, which, maybe there's one local article in it a day, right? And I don't pay atten, I don't watch TV that often. If the Beavers are playing, like, you know, I might be watching a basketball game.
I would like to feel that you're up on current events. This is a little disheartening.
It's, I'm focused on Marion County and where we live. That stuff's just all background noise to me.
Well, and it's our job, right? It's our job to fight for Marion County.
The one thing I will talk about that is local, that, you know, and for those people watching, that our Secretary of State, Dennis Richardson, passed away last night.
Passed away. Yeah, may he rest in peace.
He, he, you know, blessings to his family and, and the people that are close to and work with him, work with him. But I worked with him for nine and a half years in the legislature, and that man, you talk about somebody who was just solid integrity, a couple of memories come back to me. One, I remember when I was in leadership and we were tied thirty-thirty, he walked into my office one day, and he was the co-chair of Ways and Means. And never in the history of Oregon had we had a ten percent ending fund balance set aside. And he walks in and he says, "Mr. Leader, I'm gonna ask for..." One, I think our, I think our general fund budget at the time was like sixteen billion, and he walks in and he says, "I'm gonna ask for one-point-six billion dollars in ending fund balance." I laid back my chair, I started laughing, I go, "Dennis, you're crazy, you can't get that." And he goes, "No, I want eight-hundred million." And he's a great negotiator. And he goes into...
He went right down a notch by himself.
He started at one-point-six, and we got eight-hundred million, you know? And it was like, I watched him do that. And, and then, and then the other thing that I'll never forget about Dennis, when he would, you probably watched him on the House floor in debates or whatever, and he would, he would stand up when, you know, in his microphone, and whenever he would talk about some budget number that was in the billions, he'd say, "And it is billions! And it is billions!" And he would just emphasize that, and everybody would just, everybody's paying attention to it. He would just express billions whenever he used billions.
You're scaring me what I might see at our budget deliberations.
I mean, he, he was, and, and, you know, and, and a lot of people don't know about his, his history. He was a Vietnam helicopter pilot. He was a Vietnam helicopter pilot.
I heard that this morning. I knew it, I guess.
And to sit in the lunchroom and hear stories that he would tell, you had to ask him, though. But he had a lot of, lot of good stories, and he was one of those guys that served his country, you know, with integrity in a lot of ways. I don't remember how many kids he had, like 14 children or 13 or 11?
I want to say nine.
I want to say nine. And like 20 some odd grandkids.
I want to say nine. Yeah.
To be able to plow through when you're obviously in that physical condition, you know, kept at it and seemed valid and viable right to the end.
Yeah.
So how's that, anybody know how the replacement goes? I heard the governor does. How did that happen?
I'm not sure. Obviously, there's a temporary, I think the assistant takes over right now, but I think the governor appoints somebody because.
Based on a list provided by someone or just?
When Kate Brown left to become governor, she ended up turning and appointing somebody temporarily to the Secretary of State's position, somebody who would work at the Capitol. I can't remember the lady's name. And then I think it depends on what the timing is. He's been there more than two years, so I don't think there's a special election. I think the next election, he, he was elected in, was it '16?
Yeah.
He won in '16? So, you know, we're past the '18 election, so I think the next election would be, and I believe, since it's a partisan position, the governor would have to appoint same party.
But I just wonder how the list is derived, or she just chooses someone?
Well, I'm not going to say anything on the record, but it won't be me.
Oh, I was going to ask. Now that you know how to give that billions presentation.
I don't, I mean, I don't know how those political appointments are made, but typically they could just take, she could, if the person who's the assistant is the right party, she could appoint them, you know, she could appoint somebody who's never been, never been into an elected position, and that's typically what I think you'll see, and then there'll be an open seat that that person won't run for. It would be, it would be a surprise to me if she appointed somebody who was in, already in elected position. I'd be shocked. That's what I think.
It's tough, you know? It's tough to lose somebody.
Do good things in Washington and keep me posted. Tell them, tell those that ask that I am here doing good work. Will you try to pull that off for me?
All right. And I think that's for you, Commissioner. And then, so we will adjourn. Thank you very much.